Is everyone ready? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and call to order the August 24th meeting of the Berkeley Planning Commission. Would everyone please rise for the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up on the agenda, we have the roll call. Erin, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bardis?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
Commissioner Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Petrowski?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Stern?
Here.
Chair Kapalansky?
Here.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments or motions to approve the agenda?
Ms. Chairman, one item.
Yes.
City Councilperson Ross Gavin was also present. Because we talked, not at the meeting, but...
Are you on the July 27th?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead to the... Yeah, for our minutes.
So, are you moving to approve the agenda first?
I will move to approve the agenda.
Okay.
I let Royals do that, but I'll do that.
Support.
Could you call the roll, Erin?
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Petrowski?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Alright, so the July 27th meeting minutes. So Marty, you noted that Mr. Gavin was with us too?
Virtually, yeah.
Yep, that's right. Does anyone else have any other changes to the minutes for the 27th meeting? Or motions to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Support.
Erin, could you call the roll on that?
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Petrowski?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Alright, that brings us to communications. We have a couple issues of planning and zoning news. And Michigan Planner here, which I just read this during dinner, it was really good, the climate change one. Do we have anything else, Erin?
No.
Okay. And now we're on to citizen comment. For those attending the meeting in person, which I don't see anyone present, we would ask you to step up to the podium at this time to state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak. For those attending virtually, participants in the webcast can utilize the raise hand function by selecting manage participants on the bottom of your dashboard, then select the more button in the bottom right-hand corner. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute you so that you can speak. For those that have called in, you can be placed in the queue for public comment by selecting star nine. Our moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition and unmute you so that you can speak. Again, you will have three minutes to speak, and once your three minutes are up, you will be muted by our moderators. Additionally, we will read comments that were emailed to planning@berkeleymish.net prior to 5:00 PM. Given the circumstances with the virtual space, we may not be able to read through all of the email comments, but know that we have stored them and acknowledged them on the record. So we'll move on to public comments. Since there's no one attending in person, have we received any emails?
No, I have not.
Is there anyone who would like to participate virtually?
We do not have any attended.
Okay, then I will close citizen comment and move on to our first item on the agenda, which is old business, a public hearing to amend section 138-192. Whenever you're ready, Erin.
Yes, thank you. This item comes back to you with my apologies. So when we had the public hearing last month about the required setback and made the recommendation to city council, as I was preparing the information to go to the city council packet, I noted that the language that I had provided to you was not the most recent one that council had approved the last go-around. So I brought this back to you with, it's the same modification, but this is where the redundancy came into play that we discussed last month, and the confusion of the shall and the and in the grammar sentence. Those were all fixed previously, so really, the only thing here is just making sure that they get the most updated one that encompasses everything that was done before, and with just this minor change once again. So, my apologies that this comes back to you again.
Okay, so this looks pretty straightforward. Before I turn it over to the Planning Commission, this is a public hearing. So following the directions that I read out just prior as part of citizen comment, there's no one in person, so I assume no one wants to speak there. Have we received any emails for this?
I have not.
And is there anyone virtually who would like to comment on this public hearing?
There is not.
So I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the Planning Commission for their consideration. Or motions to approve?
Motion to approve?
Support.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion?
It's just those two words, right?
Correct. Yeah, it's the same thing that was last time. The only thing that had changed before was there was omitting some of the redundancies in the language that was clarified previously, but I didn't want to send that version to council when we'd already clarified that. So, it was brought back to you just so that procedurally-wise, we're giving them, you have seen the right one, they're seeing the right one, and we've encompassed everything.
Okay, Erin, could you call the roll?
Patterson?
Yes.
Petrowski?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. So that brings us to new business, which is a discussion of an ordinance amendment related to exterior appliances. What have you got for us tonight on this one, Erin?
Just one second.
Yep, take your time.
Okay. We discussed this last month, related to exterior appliances, in order to bring generators, discussion of generators. However, the language that I have prepared was not ready to be reviewed by the city attorney, or it's still being drafted through the building official and our trade inspectors to make sure that we've encompassed everything correctly through them. However, in looking at this a little bit more carefully, we noted some inconsistencies with the non-conformity of this, and we wanted to bring this back for you because we're getting some questions from our contractors and how this is going before. So, in our previous conversation related to the non-conformity, we had noted that during discussion that any non-conforming exterior appliances, specifically the air conditioning units, could be replaced in the exact same spot, and we would not require the screening or the setbacks or anything else, as long as it was going back in the exact same place. However, there was some changes to this along the way, which made that a little bit more difficult. So, in the section 138-75, it noted that we... Non-conforming exterior appliances include appliances that were lawfully installed, but are no longer in compliance with the provisions of this chapter, which include the screening, the 18 inches setback, etc. Non-conforming exterior appliances may be continued, maintained, and replaced, provided there is no increase or enlargement of the area occupied or devoted to such use. So that's the second component that's causing some complications with applications who want to come in for replacement of their AC unit, and sometimes they're not exactly the exact same size. So if they're increased by, you know, even a couple of inches, now all of a sudden they have to do the screening and the this and the that. So, I'm bringing this back before you, independent of the generators, because I know that will take some time to go through and make sure we have that all together, but this is something that's small that can be clarified here, and it just kind of goes along with the discussion that we had, is so that the non-conforming structures that were installed can continue, can be replaced, without having to be brought into compliance with the setback, with the screening, with all of those. And so, I wanted to bring that back before the Planning Commission, independent, so that way we could get this addressed quickly for those contractors who have those questions.
So how much bigger are the units that we're talking about? Are we talking about inches in most cases?
In most cases, it's inches. It's not usually anything that's, you know, anything egregious, but it did, the way it's written, it does provide that if something is just, you know, if it was eight by nine, now it's nine by 10, suddenly we have to put in a fence, you have to do all this stuff, when really they're just replacing an out-of-date unit. And so we're making them go through a lot of hiccups, and certainly, a site plan approval is being required at that same token to make sure it's done at the same time. So that's causing a lot more strain and stress, not only in the building department, but the contractors, the homeowners, who are just looking to replace a unit that's been there for 40, 50 years.
Yeah.
So we're just trying to be sensitive to those replacement issues. Anything that comes in that's brand-new, or being relocated from somewhere else, those will still have to come into compliance if they're going to be located in a new space. But something that has been in existence for 20, 30 years, a simple replacement is still quite an exorbitant cost, but now adding the screening on top of it, it's causing some complications.
This wouldn't allow for like a second air conditioner unit, if they so needed that, and that be okay?
Well, that would be a new, that would be a new.
That's new, okay.
Yes. So, I mean, if they're going to replace one, but then they're going to put in a new unit, we haven't had any of those come about that I'm aware of, but in my, just from my interpretation, that would be a new unit that's going in, so yes, you would have to screen that, because you're putting in not only the one unit, but now you're adding the noise factor of the secondary. They are much quieter than the older ones. I just had mine replaced, and I couldn't believe how much quieter it was. I could actually read a book next to it, it was amazing. But, you know, adding a secondary unit would require that type of screening, but we don't have too many of those here in the city.
Right.
So, the issue that's causing confusion is no increase or enlargement of the area occupied or devoted to its use?
Correct. And I went back to the meeting minutes where we had discussed, and that was something we had brought up during our discussion, was as long as it was going in the exact same place, we wouldn't require the additional screening, but this line is causing that confusion, from the intent to the language.
And, the basic issue behind this is getting too close to the neighbor's house, right? The underlying, and there's other issues involved, screening, what if we said something, I'm just throwing this out, sorry, need my glasses. Non-conforming appliances may be continued, maintained, replaced, provided there is no decrease in the existing distance to the neighboring dwelling?
Well, you're still getting into, you know, if there's an inch, an inch difference, you know, we're getting into that complication of something that's been in there for quite some time. It would still have to be located entirely on their property, it wouldn't be able to cross their property line, but we're still getting into that component.
Okay. I don't know if we, well, we do say must be 12 feet from a, well, no, this is a non-conforming.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if we can really draft something that...
So when we say, "in the same place as the prior unit,"
Mm-hmm.
Is there a way, and maybe this is a question for the commission, that we can ensure that it is centered in the exact same spot, and if it runs over by an inch or two on both sides, then it runs over by an inch or two?
So what's the threshold then? Is it an inch or two? Is it six inches? Is it 10 inches?
And that's where the component of it's being replaced in the exact same spot
Right.
is critical. So, if they're going to move it and relocate it so that it's somewhere closer to, because in that component, it's closer to a window, it's closer to someone else's deck, but if it's in the exact same place that it was, then it can be replaced without having to bring it into compliance with any other ordinances.
Could we somehow tie it to the performance of it? Assuming that somebody's going to replace an air conditioning with a air conditioning that can, you know, provide air conditioning for the house as it is, they're not going to be putting up a giant air conditioning that's cooling a second edition, or whatever have you. I mean, devil's advocate, if you originally put it there 25 years ago, and you add it on, and add it on, and add it on, you might be getting a significantly larger unit. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, well, maybe we tie it to the, however they rate air conditionings, 20% of what the original one or something was.
Well, they get smaller because of technology, but they get larger, back larger again because of the different coolants we have to use.
Does the staff, do they want a standard that's written out in units of measurement? Do they want inches?
They don't give them to that.
Or can they live with something slightly vaguer than that?
Well, I think when we get into inches, then it gets into complications with how big the units are versus how small they are. Now we've got to go back and, you know, the installer has to, we have to find out exactly how big that one is versus how big the new one is, how, what's the area of it's being occupied, the distance. It's, if it's being, I guess the question here, if it's being replaced and it's in the exact same space, how much oversight and regulation do we want to do on the ones that are being replaced in the exact same space and configuration?
I'm thinking of terms like de minimis, or minimal, or not substantial. That would though, require some judgment calls, and I just don't know if the staff wants to be in that position or not. It would seem a little common sense would dictate the answer in most cases, but...
So, kind of following that thinking then, Mark, if we said, "in the exact same space," which we already have in there, and then just left it at that, and if staff felt that they were, you know, doubling the size of the unit, because they're trying to, you know, cool the second floor better or something, then you could make the call that it needs to come back to us, or it needs to follow the new procedures?
We, yeah, we could do that. You could, we could add something if the unit is being enlarged by 50% more than its current something or other. Again, that does require us to do a little bit more work on that end, to make sure that it's not going from a 32 square foot to a, you know, 150 square foot unit, and I know that's not how they're measured, but that's just what came to mind. You know, something outlandish like that, but for the most part, they're not being that, they're not that large. It's, you know, but with this being as rigid as any increase causes this to be kicked up into bringing it into compliance, when something has been there for so long, without the screening, without the this, without the that, it's caused some complications. So, if, sorry, go ahead.
No, sorry.
So if we were to add a threshold of, "has to be brought into compliance if it's increased by more than blah blah blah," that's something that the commission could do. If we leave it open to vague interpretations, then we run the risk of someone saying, "well, you should have done this because you have the authority to do this, you should have done this, you should have done this." Well, I don't feel that I, I feel like we administratively did this right, and then we bring this back to you, and it's, with the vagueness, I think that it needs to be either across the board, replacing is replacing is replacing, or replacing at more than 50% of the square footage that it currently occupies, something like that.
You need a number.
Not more than 50%, but like, you're thinking more than 150%, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you're taking up this much space, you know, taking up this much space, then it should be brought into compliance, because obviously, the area that you're occupying, the, something along those lines, and we can continue to discuss, but that's just kind of where that's leading. So that way, someone, if it's just making it a little bit bigger, isn't being forced to then, you know, install 3,000-foot or a $3,000 fence.
I like that idea. I mean, I think probably most of them, 95% of them or more, are probably just replacing them with something that's very similar. But there could be the one guy that's, has done building additions and building additions, and now he's like, "I'm gonna get new air conditioning," and it needs to be substantially bigger.
And that's a very good point. That is, that's probably the biggest issue we're gonna have, because there is a lot of, or has been a lot of additions going on in town, and I expect many to continue, maybe not at the same pace, but that's a very valid point. But what is that threshold? Is it 33%? Is it 50% larger? I don't think anybody here knows the answer to that.
So I had mine replaced a couple of years ago, and it's not wider, but it's taller than the other.
Taller, yeah.
So I mean, I don't know, but it's quieter than the old one. The old one was 25 years old, so I kind of like having a percent. I think inches is splitting hairs, and then we're gonna be measuring and taking somebody's word for what the old unit was compared to the new one. I mean, that's gonna be a nightmare for staff, so maybe a percentage of, I mean, we're trying not to get them extremely large, so say 50%. I mean, see where that gets us, we can always revisit.
Increases it more than 50%?
That, yeah, I would be fine with that.
Where does it say in here, "the exact same location," though? Or did I miss it?
Yeah, I was looking for it too.
In 138-75?
Area occupied.
Non-conforming exterior appliances may be continued, maintained, and replaced, provided there is no increase or enlargement of the area occupied or devoted to such use.
Area occupied.
So when you talk about replacement, it's replacing in the spot that it's currently configured?
But we're getting rid of increase and enlargement of the area. Okay, you have to reword that sentence.
Yes. Provided there is no increase or enlargement over 50% of the current area occupied or devoted to such use.
Okay, that solves both.
I have one other question about the next paragraph, about the 50% of the market value. I thought we decided to kind of take that out, because if it's damaged, you might replace it, but put it in the same spot. Does anybody remember that, or?
I remember that.
I don't recall that.
Well, that's kind of a standard...
It's kind of a standard...
Talking about the structure of the home is damaged, including the AC unit.
Right.
Oh, this is the structure.
So this is about the structure being damaged.
Okay, not the unit itself.
Not the unit itself, no.
Okay, maybe I was reading it wrong.
It's kind of a standard threshold of when something is being replaced, or when it's considered new.
Okay, so that's structure, home, not, okay. I think I was reading it wrong.
Just kind of throwing this out there, is 50% indeed the reasonable percentage, or should it be 33%?
Yeah.
I mean, is there any analysis we can apply here?
I can bring you some specs on what some older ones look like, and what they were, and what some of the more current models are. I know I just had mine replaced last month, earlier this month, and it was bigger, but only by, you know, it was a 32 by 34 instead of a 28 by 32. It was a little bit taller, but I also relocated it to the other side of my house. It was still in the rear yard, so I followed all the rules, but...
I would hope so.
Yes, thanks for adding that.
But, you know, they are a little bit wider, or a little bit bigger, so in that sense, if there was a requirement of cannot be replaced by any larger use, I wouldn't have been able to move this, or do anything, or replace it without possibly going for a variance, if the rules were different where I am, but neither here nor there. It's making someone come into compliance or changing something, when really they're replacing something that's a little bit outside of their control. They can't, they can't buy the same unit and the same size as they currently have.
But I'm just wondering about the actual percentage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think...
It sounds to me like 33% is closer to what we're actually seeing in the marketplace, but I'm not an expert, and I wouldn't presume to say that's what it should be. I'm just wondering if we've given that enough thought.
Well, I think, I've thought about the 50% versus, you know, 33%, but, you know, we're also getting into a component where 50% is a little bit easier to eyeball, and to look at it and say, "okay, that's obviously more than half," whereas maybe 33% is something you have to do a little bit more of, "okay, now we need dimensions, you gotta give this, we gotta, you know, break out the abacus" kind of thing. So, you know, if we were to do something that's a little bit easier to discern from the naked eye, that it's 50% versus under, it might make things easier in the review process.
Does this, does this only apply to the footprint of it, or does it also to the size overall, like the height as well?
Area or volume is what you mean, right?
I think this would be the footprint.
We're talking area, they tend to be taller.
This is area, this is specifically area.
Right, because they tend now to be like smaller and taller, so they're, typically this isn't gonna be an issue, they're gonna take up a smaller footprint.
So for, like, running math, some math, like if you have one that's two by three, 24 by 36, that's six square feet, and if we're saying 50% bigger, that's nine square feet, so then you could go up to a three by three, so then the one length is 36 inches, so that means it's 12 inches longer? I mean, that seems like really generous, probably, probably not even, which is fine, I just think it probably would never see anything over that, right?
Unless we're trying, what we're trying to word it as, that somebody doesn't go put a humongous one up there. I mean, that's, so maybe 50%, that's what your thought was.
But they're also limited by their size.
Correct.
You can't make them super huge, unless you get a commercial grade, and, you know, can't do, you can't do a commercial grade on a residential home, it doesn't work. So that's where the secondary unit would come into play, in which case then they would have to be brought into the conformity of the standard.
Then they would have to re-conform anyway.
Yep, it's a new unit, mm-hmm.
Many planning commissioners over the years have said, "we don't want to be the design police, we don't want to regulate, over-regulate things." I believe that. 50% is very generous, and, you know, if they're going over 50%, I'm speculating, I'm guessing here, they're really enlarging it for some reason, addition, multiple additions to the house. So, I think that's fair. You know, we don't want to regulate it down to inches, as we said. You have to throw numbers on these things, you can't leave it, that's what gets us all in trouble. So, maybe 50% is a fair number, we're not being over-regulating, or whatever, over-intrusive with what the homeowner wants to do.
Typically, they don't stick out more, right? They just, their dimensions are a little different.
I mean, they still have to maintain, I think it's six inches from the home, as required by code, so if the area of the unit is increasing a little bit, it may, it may go a little bit further into, closer to the next home, or closer to the fence line, or whatever, but again, it's not going to be anything that's totally intrusive.
Plus, if they're replacing it, the new one is gonna be quieter than the rusty old one, which a blade is missing on the fan.
Exactly, exactly.
Right?
Yeah, you could hear my AC coming across, you know, when I was in the back of the garage. Now, you know, couldn't even hear it was running. It's really nice. I'm gonna brag about it, because it was so lovely.
Well, you know, you're right, 50% is easy to visualize and to calculate, and nobody here knows the right number, and if we come across something in the future, we can adjust it, but that's probably fair, we're not being, you know, too much stickler.
I think it's generous.
This also does apply with the exterior appliances, this also does apply to generators.
Right.
Now, they have a longer lifespan than air conditioning units, because they're not used all the time, but just so, just so we're aware that this would also apply to...
A lot of other things goes, a lot of other stuff goes along with the generators.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and we're gonna dive into generators later, but if, but if, when we move forward with this language, the exterior appliances includes the air conditioning units as well as the generators.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have a number of these, or is it just a couple right now? Like, not enough to get a really good sample size of how much they're enlarging?
In terms of the number of applications that we've received?
Yeah, that you've run into this problem with.
Quite a few.
So is it enough that you could kind of look at the amount of increase there are, and come up with an average percentage that they're increasing right now, and see if 50% is really the right number?
The component that goes into that is also the, we can see what they're going to be doing, but a lot of them don't know what the make and the model is, the contractors don't know the make and the model that is currently there. They're just coming in to pull the permits, they're replacing it, they don't know what's there, they're just, you know, so having, I mean, we can ask, you know, but they're not providing that level of detail on the permit.
So going forward, how do we, I guess, 10 years from now, when somebody's going to replace something, how do we know, how are we gonna know what this model was, and if it's 50% bigger or not? Does that make sense? Like, if we're not, if we don't have that base number, how are we going to know if it's meeting that or not?[1701.62]
Right, and that's where we're going to get into modifying our, our permit application process a little bit, and so, uh, we can ask that information. We don't currently ask that, so, um, having to go back and ask them for that, um, once they've submitted everything, once we've reviewed it, oh wait, now you need this, now you need this. Um, but if we modify the application, say, what's, what is your current make and model? What is your current area, uh, being occupied by the unit itself? Um, that's something that they would know to provide it from the very beginning, and that way we can monitor and keep track. And if we do come across where it's only increasing twenty percent, twenty-five percent, and we've never reached anything else, and it becomes, um, to, you know, this fifty percent is too much, we can always come back at a later date and modify it down further to thirty percent, because we've never, in, in five years, we've never broached thirty percent, you know, something like that.
I think it's a good idea to change, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think it's a good idea to ask that question on the permit. Now, it'll always magically be under fifty percent, but the existing unit. Uh, but, at least you're asking a question, and they're impel, you know, compelled to be somewhat honest about it, so.
Right, yeah, and, you know, for most permits, we, you know, they provide information, and we have to take their word that they're going to construct and do things the way that they say they're going to do. So, there's an element of trust there. We can't go out and monitor every single thing, but yes.
Did you say this would apply to the generators as well, when we get to that part?
Correct, mm-hmm, yes. But those aren't typically being replaced at the rate, and, um, at, at, that air conditioning units are. So, we focus a lot of the conversation on the air conditioning units, but the exterior appliances would be a part of that as well.
So, is everyone okay with moving forward with the fifty percent? Yes?
Do you want to see that language, or do you feel comfortable with me drafting something based on our conversation, and setting the public hearing for next month?
I think you're fully capable of.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Let you see that sentence.
Could we get a motion on that, just?
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I don't think so, this is a discussion item.
No, okay. Okay, so everyone's comfortable with setting the public hearing, okay?
Yes.
Okay. And then you will be seeing generators come back.
Good.
At a certain time to, yeah, to discuss.
I really can hardly wait.
I know you've been excited.
Sitting at the edge of my chair. Okay, so that's all we have for new business, so, liaise on reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
I do.
Go ahead, Lisa?
Um, I went to the DDA meeting, they had a presentation on the DDA rebrand. The concept is reinventing charm. Um, so they have a new kind of retro design feel logo, we should be seeing that start to roll out. Um, they're looking at getting benches throughout the downtown, and they're going to look similar to the ones that, um, Parks and Rec have gotten, like around the splash pad. So, there's kind of a feel of unity throughout the city. Um, they had a decent conversation on murals, and what constitutes an advertisement on a mural, um, and if they need to rearrange some of their language on their applications, because, um, some of them, or I think one of them recently has kind of crossed more into advertising, and not so much art. Um, and then they were asking about the design guidelines, and when they were going to see movement on that.
For environmental, we, uh, we had, uh, our, our workshop with city staff on Monday. Uh, it was held together with the tree board, and, um, uh, my compliments to, uh, Ms. Mathis and Mr. Hill for, uh, conducting that workshop very efficiently. I think it helped clarify in their minds, uh, um, the, the history of our committee, and, and its, uh, activities, and, um, they provided some focus, uh, for us to, uh, uh, to chew on as well, going forward. So, um, I, I thought it was a, a very, a positive exercise.
Good.
The Chamber of Commerce meeting was scheduled to take place at a restaurant during the power outage. Didn't take place, so I have no update.
Okay. Um, all right, thanks, everyone, for that. Uh, anyone for commissioner or staff comments? Go ahead, Marty.
Well, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, just, uh, out of curiosity, um, uh, you don't have to be specific, but I'm just wondering i- i- if you could give us kind of a preview of coming attractions, next few meetings, are, are there any, uh, projects pending, uh, in the city that, that we're going to be, uh, that, that are going to be on our table the next few months? Uh, can you just kind of, in general, uh, tell us, tell us about those?
Sure, yeah. Um, so, we do have a couple of facade improvements that, uh, should be coming to you. Um, they are going through the DDA facade grant program, and per our, um, procedure, they do that first, to make sure that they can secure the funding, because, um, they can't secure the funding, then there's no point in getting approval, if they have to go back there and do that again. So, um, they're, they're looking to go through, through their, um, their review, uh, this month, and then hopefully we'll be seeing a couple of those coming to you, coming to you shortly. But it's a matter of how long it takes them to, to go through their, their process. There are a lot of, we've been having a lot of developer meetings, a lot of people have a lot of ideas on this, that, and the other thing. Um, so, a lot of things are still very conceptual, I don't want to, um, get people too excited, but there has been a lot of developer meetings, a lot of people are, are, are looking at some properties, and some really great ideas, um, so we've met with a couple of them, we see a couple of renderings, and then they go back and tweak and modify, and, um, and see what can work based on our ordinances, and based on best practices, and based on, um, uh, input, not only from, from community development, but also from, uh, engineering, or DPW, and, and public safety. So, there has been a lot of stuff going on behind the wings, that hopefully we can, we can bring to you in the next couple of months.
Great.
Is that activity picking up?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, we're very busy.
Good.
Mm-hmm, yeah, very exciting.
Thank you.
I, I know, I drove by the Vincetta Garage area on the way here, noticed, uh, that the homes are demoed on Eaton, and on Oxford, a lot of you folks don't know about this ongoing thing. Uh, in Oxford, they seem to be in progress for future parking lots. Are we going to be seeing site plan?
You will be.
Okay.
Um, I have been, uh, reaching out to the owner, to the attorneys. Um, one of them just, um, emailed me, uh, last night, I was, uh, I had a vacation day today, so I didn't get back to her today, but, um, emailed me about wanting to, to start discussions about that. So, I don't know, um, she said she wanted to update me on, on their process. I don't know when that's going to come before you, but if there are parking lots that, uh, will be developed, they will absolutely come to this body for approval before anything is started. I don't know where they are in the, in the process on that, though.
Offer them a work session, or even, uh.
Absolutely.
A non, you know, a, a non-official item on a regular agenda.
Absolutely, we've, we've talked about that, we want to make sure that we are above board on everything, and we are, uh, we, we work in tandem on the whole thing, we don't want them coming, coming before this body with something that's subpar, and that, um, gets people in, in excited, or, or upset. We really want to make sure that we, we work together with them to make sure it not only is, satisfies our requirements, but re- enhances that area, services that area the way it's supposed to, and also is something that, uh, the neighbors can, can appreciate, and, and aren't upset about.
Yeah, it's a tough.
It's a tough not to crack, for sure.
It's always a tough issue, putting parking lots into neighborhoods, and.
Right.
It's got to be done right.
Yep.
And, uh, okay, and then, is, is Mr. Gavin here tonight?
Hey, Marty.
Oh, hi, Ross. Any news on the ZBA issue last week? We were told la- oh, there, look at your happy face. We were told, um, last month.
I'm sitting really still, still.
You don't, you're not sweating outside in the heat there. Uh, we, last month, we, as we, you know, I brought this up about the ZBA issue, and, and it's still troublesome. Um, you know, indicated that there's talks going on between ZBA, the staff, and city council, and I've talked to four people who were sitting in that meeting of the six, two of them left. Uh, none of them had heard anything, and a month has passed. And, uh, I really think, and I got a lot here, I, I won't go through it all, we can do that another time. But, you, I really think they deserve an answer. Did, did, you know, I have a very simple question. What hardship, I'm talking to your picture here, what hardship did city council find that ZBA didn't? And obviously, it upset, uh, the response from city council upset two of them enough to leave at, in a meeting, in a public meeting, and that's a big deal. Uh, they deserve an answer, um, I think we are connected to the ZBA, because we write the ordinances, we deserve an answer, and, uh, you know, Berkeley citizens who pay attention deserve an answer of what's going on. Uh, the volunteers get praised ad nauseam by the city council for the work they do, and, and something happened, and the city council clams up. And, uh, you know, it's to why, you know, if, if the, if the ZBA made a mistake, enlighten us, please. Because this has gone on for almost two months, month and a half, and people. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead, Marty.
No, I'm done, I mean, I just, people are still upset about it.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that, Marty, you know, I don't, I, when I gave the update the last time, that was the most recent information that I had, uh, when I gave that, so that was what I, what I shared at that point. Um, I know that there were conversations, but it may have been prior to, uh, any, um, you know, any resignation at that point. You know, I don't have any update for you, other than to say that I do realize that, you know, people may not have agreed with the decision of council, and certainly understand that, uh, that that is the case. Um, you know, I do want to thank, uh, you know, the former members of the ZBA for the service, and welcome the new ones that were appointed at the last council meeting, but I guess, you know, short to say that I, I realize that not everybody, uh, may have liked what the council actually decided there.
Okay, and I don't think that's the issue, really, uh, Mr. Gavin, I, I think, you know, people may or may not agree with what the council did, but it's, you know, I, I believe the council has the right to overturn, uh, a decision by the ZBA. You know, we all know that it, it tends to go to circuit court, but I understand that there are circumstances where the city council can overturn, and that's fine. If there was a mistake that ZBA made, fine, tell us what it is. And I think that's the simple question, what did you folks find that the ZBA didn't? Or, I, I can't find anything that they did wrong, there, there are five items that they have to, uh, prove, but it's got to be a hardship in some manner, and what did you folks find? And I've talked to several city council people, one's told me, case is closed, nothing for disgust. And that's not right.
Can, can I interject something?
Please.
Um, it's, I think it's a little unfair, or inaccurate, I guess is, is the word, to talk about the ZBA doing something wrong, and the, and the council doing something right. The, the, the issue of a hardship, I think, is, is it really a judgment call? It really is, and people can differ on, in, in, in making that judgment. Now, that said, I, I don't know where the difference lies myself, and I'd be curious to know that, but, uh, right and wrong make me a little bit uncomfortable.
I appreciate that, but that's not the point, to me. The point is, they must have found something.
Right.
What was it? No one's, they've been silent, and, or the city council does not want to tell anybody what they found. I think that's a big disservice to everybody, and if they did, enlighten us, tell us what it is. Tell this, especially the ZBA what it is, tell us what it is, tell the citizens what it is. And, uh, it's not an issue of right and wrong. Everybody has, there are very five specific things they have to show, but what was it? And that's all people are asking, and they haven't had an answer yet. So, that's the question I have.
I add something. Yeah, I think the big question is why, because we volunteer here, the ZBA volunteers, they spend a lot of time, and, and they just want to know why, because they felt like their backs, like, city council didn't have their back. And I think that it's important for all the boards to know that you do have their backs, and in order to know that, we have to know why. Whether you found something wrong, or it was just easier to do it this way, whatever it is, why?
Thank you, I think that's fair, yeah, yeah, what was it they found? So, thank you, Ross.
Thank you, Marty.
Always a pleasure, talking to your picture.
Is that a?
Better than the real, better than the real thing.
Is that a frowny face, I see?
It just got frowny, yeah.
Just kidding, I'm just kidding, Ross.
That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, uh, anyone else? Yes, Erin?
I just have a couple of updates, um, regarding some things going on. So, the master plan, um, that's out for public comment, as we all know, required sixty-three days per the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. Uh, I will be meeting with Oakland County's, uh, Coordinated Zoning Committee tomorrow morning to answer any questions related to the master plan draft. Um, it is still up on our city website, so if anybody has any comments, or anything they want to, to, uh, send to us, please, by all means, do so. Um, there are also comment boxes available at all city hall facility, sorry, city facilities. So, at City Hall, DPW, DPS, Parks and Rec, the Senior Center, and the library. We were also out at Cruz Fest, uh, soliciting comments, uh, there over the weekend. Um, comments can be sent, uh, put in those boxes, they can be mailed or dropped off to City Hall, uh, or you can email them at masterplan, to masterplan@berklemish.net, so, excited to.
Are you getting a lot of comments?
We're getting a couple, a, a lot of good, a lot of good feedback, a lot of people asking questions, and, uh, and things like that, but a lot of good comments.
Okay.
Nobody, nobody's, uh, you know, said it's terrible, and we missed the mark yet, so, that's, that's a good sign.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of, a lot of positive feedback. Um, Aquatots, so, uh, they had the pre-construction meeting last month, uh, the demo of the building, uh, was postponed, um, due to a, a myriad of, of reasons, but, uh, it's supposed to be, the demo's supposed to start this week. Keep an eye out for that. Uh, the Berkeley Plaza project is moving forward, they're looking to begin construction on that in the, uh, sometime next month. And La Selette, I wanted to, to bring this up. So, um, I had mentioned before, previously, that, um, you know, they, they've received their site plan approval, they're, they were going through some modifications with the stormwater, um, um, components with the, with the engineers, and with DPW. And then they also discussed possibly modifying their parking, um, layout. So, at one point, they were going to, if you recall, there were about six spaces that were on the south of the building, that were really kind of in front, no one really liked it. Uh, but that was before the parking modification ordinance went into effect. So, now that that was into effect, they came to me and said that they were going to pursue that modification of those six spaces. Uh, we should be looking for that sometime in August, obviously, that's not here before you. Um, when we discussed further, they, um, had made some modifications to their plan, in which case they were able to remove those six spaces from that area, and incorporate them into the rear of the building. So, they are in the same, um, area, they're just, what they're doing is they're minimizing a lot of those parking islands, um, that were in this, um, in the area. Um, so, we don't have any requirement for parking islands, or, or landscaping, or vegetation. Now, per our ordinance, and this is, I'm bringing this up so we all, all know, but per our ordinance, um, certain, certain modifications, or certain changes to an approved site plan can be reviewed administratively, and one of them has to do with the modification of, um, the landscaping, alterations to the layout, um, the relocation of a dumpster, all of those things are, they're looking to do. So, those are, um, what they're, they're looking to do now, um, in which case, any landscaping they would lose from the rear of the building, we would make them put into the front, to make the, the front area along Coolidge a little bit, a little bit nicer. Um, so, it's really going to be a net zero, they're not going to be, um, increasing the, uh, um, neither increasing the impervious surface, nor, nor decreasing it, it's all, it's just being relocated elsewhere on the site. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that, so, um, that won't be coming back before this body, unless they make some other changes that, that require planning commission approval, but I wanted you to be aware that when that, um, comes to fruition, that those are some of the minor changes that are being made to the overall site plan. Uh, but they are looking to, uh, move forward with that, and hopefully get started on the construction phase uh, in the coming months, because they're already doing interior demo stuff, um, and that's going, going quite well. If you, if you've been back there, they've got a, a shoot out the building, it's kind of fun. Um, but, they, um, they're looking to do, start doing the interior, uh, construction soon.
So, Erin, they, they have commenced within the meaning of the, uh, the, the time limit in their permit, is that right? They've commenced work on the site?
They've commenced, the interior demolition has, has begun. They have not started, they have not started any construction on the exterior, on the interior of the building, or anything on the site as of yet, no.
So, are they, are they still up against the time limit for commencing, or not?
No, 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 there's no time limit to commence, all that, all that, uh, has already been worked through, so they're, yeah, they're just fine on that front.
So, you said there's a net zero change of parking spaces?
Correct.
Okay, so that doesn't have to come.
Yeah, they still meet the parking requirement, it's just they, instead of having those six spaces up near the front of the building, and taking out the green area there, they're just shrinking some of the, the landscape islands in, in, at the rear of the building, um, to incorporate those sticks there. But yes, they do meet, still meet their parking requirement.
That's fine, well, I'm glad that, I'm glad they're doing that, because, uh, that green space is a big chunk, chunk of green.
Agreed.
Yeah, and especially on Coolidge. Sounds like there's going to be a lot going on in that little neighborhood there.
Mm-hmm, it's going to be very busy over the coming months.
Three projects at one time, so.
Yep.
When do they hope to open, do they say?
No, we have not, uh, we don't, we don't have that information yet. But as, as.
We don't like predicting that stuff.
Have you gotten into phase two with them at all, or?
The phase, the phase two development at the rear of the building?
Yeah.
So, we have had conceptual discussions with them about phase two. Um, they have brought us, uh, a couple of renderings, and a couple of ideas, and, and one of them had to deal with some parking issues, and might need a modification, that's where we came with this, and with this, and blah, blah. So, they're still working through some of those components there, there was some height discussions that they needed to, to worry about, um, so, uh, they're, they're still working through their plans. We don't have anything, um, set as to when they're coming, they just kind of, um, hey, we've got another idea, let's talk. Okay, cool, and then they go back and tweak, so, but we have had discussions, yes.
So, it looks like we're actually going to have some projects to look at, instead of just talking about stuff here shortly.
Hopefully.
Good, good. And air, yeah, generators and stuff.
Well, I mean, once the master plan, I mean, the, the sixty-three days is up in September twenty-third for the master plan, so then that will be coming back to you with all those comments, so then you'll have, uh, that big picture to look at, and then, yeah, some of the, the hard work of the ordinance discussions will begin.
So, that's going to begin right away, after adoption of the master plan, probably?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, boy, okay.
And we'll fit the design guidelines in there somewhere?
Yes, those are being worked on as, as we speak, all up in here. Yes, those are being worked on as we speak, all up in here. Well, Chris, I sent you and Mateo some stuff and I've had some feedback from Jennifer Finney, the former DDA director. And so now it's incorporating those comments and then getting those drafts to kind of our internal committee. And once those are kind of flushed out, then they'll be able to come back before this body and the DDA and really engage the business owners and start those conversations again to make sure that they, we're not thrusting something upon them, but something that's agreeable for everybody. But still, but still maintains. I'm sorry?
I said, so the idea is still a ways out, then?
It's in, I don't want to say it's coming back to you next month. I'd love for it to come to you in September. It's just a matter of getting it on to, getting it on, getting it through the, kind of the subcommittees before it can get to the, to the public discussion. But yes, it is coming before you shortly.
Okay, good.
All right, if there's nothing else, if anyone wants to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Erin, could you call the roll?
Petrowski?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.